All right, let's call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council, July 10th. The time is 7:30. Can we have a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis. Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Soltis? He informed us before that he could not attend.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Any discussion on excusing Councilman Soltis? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Tonight, an invocation would be given by Councilman Clark. And we'll have a pledge of allegiance, so will you please rise if you're able?
Heavenly Father, so many times we've become immersed in daily troubles and hardships. Help us to see beyond these small problems and instead work toward making our community a happier and healthier place for all. Please guide us in our efforts this day and the days to follow. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever-ten and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We need to appoint an acting clerk tonight. Could I please have a motion to appoint Ramona Sanchez?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
I'm so moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any discussion on appointing Ramona Sanchez as the acting city clerk for tonight's meeting? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none. We'll go to reports on agenda of interest to parties in the audience. Okay, next we'll go to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity to address any subject with City Council. Good evening.
Good evening. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, have the local information to tell you that we've been moved. This third Tuesday, July 18th, at 7:30, we're not going to be at Wilkinson. We're going to be at Madison Elementary. And instead of the nice flyer, I found out last minute, so I ended up having to make one that wasn't so decorative. Anyway, the snacks and beverages are still on us, and everyone is welcome.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address City Council? The meeting's open to the public. This is the time. Good evening, sir.
Yes, we're having a community barbecue. Friends of Madison Heights area, senior citizens, August 19th. We're serving hamburgers and hot dogs from noon until 7:00 at Huffman Park.
Great, okay. Huffman Park at 400 West Cowan. Thank you. Oh, that's Wayne Moore. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? All right, no one's asked to be recognized, so we'll close that portion of the meeting. We have a communication tonight, C1. It's from Gospel Life Church. Mr. Meyer?
Yes, Your Honor. Gospel Life Church is requesting to use Rosie's Park for their community picnics on Wednesday, July 12th and Wednesday, July 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There are no fees associated with the use of the Rosie's Park, and the city's risk manager has approved the insurance that has been submitted for the event. Staff and I recommend that council approve the event, subject to compliance with council's policy on the uniform insurance requirements for special events.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the requested use by Gospel Life Church to use Rosie's Park for a, well, for community picnics, subject to their compliance with the uniform insurance requirements for special events.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. Any, let's see, a motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the requested use by Gospel Life Church for Rosie's Park for community picnics, subject to the council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have one report tonight. It's under D1. It's from the city attorney and the police chief regarding the entertainment permit for Masters Restaurant. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Staff, the city attorney's office, and I recommend approval of the renewal of the agreement for entertainment permit with Masters Restaurant Group, Inc., doing business as the Masters Restaurant at 1775 East 13 Mile Road. If council concurs, the appropriate action would be to continue the agreement for two years, including but not limited to the next review, which will take place on or about July 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
I move to continue the agreement for two years for the Masters Restaurant Group, Inc., including but not limited to the next review, which will take place on or about July 1st, 2019.
Great. Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Support.
Great. A motion made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Clark, to approve the agreement with Masters Restaurant Group, Inc., doing business as the Masters Restaurant at 1775 East 13 Mile, for two years, including but not limited to the next review, which will take place on July 1, 2019. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. There's nothing under item E on our agenda, so we'll go to item F1, from the police chief regarding the K-9 vehicle. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. This purchase is to replace vehicle number 116, which is a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria, with a Ford SUV utility vehicle, which will give more room for our K-9 and the related necessary equipment. Staff and I recommend that council approve the purchase of a 2017 utility police interceptor from Signature Ford through the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program in the amount of $31,799. And I would note that funds are budgeted and available for the scheduled replacement.
Great, thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the purchase of a, well, of a K-9 vehicle, which is a 2017 interceptor, utility police interceptor, through, well, from Signature Ford, and it is being purchased through the Macomb Community Cooperative Bid Program in the amount of $31,799. The funds are budgeted and scheduled for replacement.
That's it. That's it. Any support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I support.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve the purchase of a 2017 police interceptor from Signature Ford through the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program in the amount of $31,799, and the funds are budgeted and available. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I would really appreciate it. There's a lot of good reasons why we're purchasing this vehicle, and I'd love for the public to hear them. I was wondering if the chief could come up and give kind of the quick overview of why we're proposing this purchase today?
Police Chief Haynes, would you please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, counsel. It's time and it's due for replacement. The current K-9 vehicle, which is a 2011 Crown, Ford Crown Victoria, has just over 106,000 miles on it and is rapidly becoming an issue with maintenance and et cetera. With the new vehicle, with the 2017 Ford utility vehicle, we're going to provide not only a little bit more room for the K-9, but we also ordered this vehicle in a lighter color to help with the heat associated with our K-9. And we're also adding a prisoner compartment, so the vehicle will not only be able to house the K-9, it will actually be able to house a prisoner, therefore freeing up other vehicles from having to be used for transport purposes. So all in all, scheduled to be replaced and can be replaced with a much nicer vehicle.
And, Your Honor, just one point to add to what Chief Haynes says. We're also proceeding with our strategy to move to the SUV vehicle from the, from the regular vehicle. Gives us more versatility and functionality.
Yes, and more room for equipment, more functionality entirely.
Thank you. I've heard that the Ford interceptors are much better than other models for maintenance. It's been easier to buy, you know, parts in bulk. They break down less frequently. The officers enjoy the space. Any comment that, you know, just from the administrative side on whether these Ford products are working?
Yes, they have been, with the exception of a few of the vehicles, we had some problems with fuel issues, or what was potentially fuel issues, they have been outstanding. The maintenance has been very low. We have a great relationship with local Ford dealer. We're able to get our vehicles serviced when needed, when it's outside of the DPW's purview or under warranty. All in all, since we've switched over to the entire Ford fleet, we've been very happy with the service.
Thanks. Any further discussion on this item? All right, we'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries. We don't have anything under G or H tonight, so could I please have a motion regarding the minutes of June 26?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion that the minutes of June 26, 2017, be adopted as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, a motion made by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adopt as printed the minutes of June 26, 2017, the council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next, we have appointments to boards and commissions. I see there are a few applicants, one for the Multicultural Relations Board and another for the Planning Commission. The one for the Planning Commission is a mayor's appointment, so would someone please confirm the mayor's appointment of Andy Dean Wakeland to a three-year term on the Planning Commission?
Your Honor.
Expiring August 2020. Yes, sir.
Happy to make the motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Andy Wakeland to the Planning Commission with a term that would expire 8/10/2020.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing, on accepting the mayor's appointment of Andy Wakeland to the Planning Commission? No discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Could I have a motion regarding Ms. Egert on the Multicultural Board?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move to appoint, well, I guess it'd be reappoint.
Right.
Ms. Egert to a term which will be expiring in August of 2020.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on reappointing Jeanette Egert to the Multicultural Relations Advisory Board on a three-year term expiring August 2020? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any other appointments this evening? All right. Well, that was quick. We don't have an executive session scheduled for this evening, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from City Council members. Let's begin. Mr. Corbett?
Just two quick items, both in the category of recreation. One would be to acknowledge the rollout this week of the voucher program for the water park. The tickets are available, and I understand there'll be some publicity on that coming out in a week. It's also available on the website for the city. The tickets are available. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of the Parks and Recreation Committee on this area. It was something that we sort of came up with late in the going, and it was an attempt to meet a need that had been identified and do it in an economical way, and hopefully will work out. We'll see how it goes after this year, but also I wanted to thank the, I noticed that we even got discounts from the county on top of that, which I was not expecting. Originally, the tickets were like $14, and they're going to be like $12 instead, and then they, go ahead.
Yeah, yes, Your Honor. No, they have a, they have a current bulk ticket rate program in place. In fact, the Girl Scouts was one of the users last year, and they applied that same courtesy to us.
The other item I wanted to mention, this is, falls under the category of things I wish I'd thought of about 12 months ago but didn't. Over the past couple months, I've been sent some photos and some examples of recreation swing sets and playscapes and so on geared towards children with handicaps that have various disabilities and so on. The one which, I mean, it was just one of those obvious things. It was, it was a swing suitable for kids in wheelchairs. It was just simply a corrugated aluminum frame that the parent could just simply knock down the back, slide a child onto it in the wheelchair, and it would give the experience of being on a regular swing. And so where I'm going with this is that it's a little late to incorporate it now, although we are beginning to spend money to begin the replacement of playground equipment through the city. So I'd like to get a report from the Recreation Area Department, Public Service, what, if anything, can be done in the current year to incorporate some of that expenditure geared towards children with special needs. And then possibly next year, I can work with my fellow council members and maybe incorporate it and do a goal proposal to, a little more comprehensive approach rather than kind of late in the going. But we worked pretty hard as it was, and it took a long time to get the proposals through, so I'm not interested in revisiting any of that this year. But anything that can be done in the short term, and then possibly, like I said, we can look at a goal proposal to begin to expand our recreation opportunities for children with needs.
Well, Mr. Corbett, your idea is well received.
Yeah.
And you're perfectly situated working on the Parks and Rec Board, but there's a, we have a willing partner, and maybe you've already talked to them. The Madison School Board wants to do something too. They want to collaborate with the city, so it sounds like a perfect project for you and Parks and Rec to kind of chew on, and, man, if we had a partner with Madison School District, that could help offset some costs, but maybe accelerate the excitement about this.
There were a couple of church groups that had also indicated possibly some interest also, but like I said, it's, it's early and it's kind of on the fly, but, but I'd like to see what we can do for the current year. And then looking forward, like I said, maybe with Madison, maybe with the church groups. But, and, you know, like I said, I don't think it's, I think when it's planned for, when it's programmed for in acquisition, it's much more cost efficient than to try and come in and, you know, at the last minute. But anyway, that's something I'd like to put in the pipeline now, and then we can look at it later on, so. But that's it. Thank you, sir.
Great. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. I also want to talk about the voucher program and rolling that out. I'm really excited. That was the last, the very last of the council goals that we adopted, and it was a very, very, very much downsized version of the splash pad goal that I had introduced, because the financial realities were, we weren't going to be able to put in a splash pad this year. Probably not next year, too. Maybe not the year after. But as a part of that discussion, you know, it identified the strong need in the community, not just because we saw it in the Parks and Rec surveys, you know, where that was the number one new item that was requested in both of the park surveys, but also that there are so many families in our city that even though we have a water park within the boundaries of our city with the splash pad, they simply couldn't afford to go. And it's a, it's a challenge to be able to provide opportunities for, you know, recreation in our city at any price point in any cell, but it was, it was nice that at the end of the, at the end of that long goals process that Councilman Corbett was discussing, this was that final, can we come up with some money to be able to do that? And we got together and creatively came up with this program, and I think it's a phenomenal thing. I put it out on Facebook on Friday, and my phone was blowing up the entire weekend. It was absolutely incredible, the amount of messages and comments and shares, just from my personal posts, hundreds of shares, hundreds of shares. And just, I want to read some of the comments that I got, you know, no names or anything, but "You don't, you don't know what you just did for my family. My boy loves water, and I can't afford to take them all the time, and we wouldn't even last but an hour or two. This is so amazing. Thank you all for your persistence on this. I have my four granddaughters daily and can't afford to pay for them all and myself also. This is a tremendous help. Thank you for coming up with something for our families and our community. This is a great option. Thank you for listening to the panels. That's exactly why I participated. I have a son with autism. He is six, and he loves the water, and every time we pass the park, he gets so excited that we can never afford to bring him there. I think it's a wonderful thing that you did." So I'm thrilled to report that this is the first day. We just put it out on our city's official social media. It hasn't been in a single newspaper or publication yet. Just through word of mouth from Facebook, we had 141 total vouchers redeemed today. 141. That's incredible.
And actually, Your Honor, that number's up to about 160.
It's up to 160 now. It's incredible, absolutely incredible, that initial groundswell of excitement over this program, and for a very, very economical cost. I mean, this was savings that we were able to divert in the 11th hour of the goals process. So really, really exciting. And, too, the process for redeeming these vouchers has been highlighted on Facebook as well. People have said that they went in this morning, quote, "Had no trouble. It was absolutely fantastic. We're very excited for this opportunity." "I went in around 1:30 this afternoon. No one in line. The gentleman that waited on me couldn't have been more helpful or pleasant to deal with. Great deal for the wave pool. We actually went yesterday and spent $98 in the park, not including concessions. So thank you to the city of Madison Heights for giving your residents the opportunity to enjoy water-based fun without going broke." Absolutely awesome. So I wanted to, once again, thank staff, thank the Parks and Rec Board, thank council, how we were able to come together and accomplish this. You know, in the future, you know, this, this program, maybe we can, maybe we can plan for a splash pad. I don't want to give up on that, because I think that the demand is there, and I think this is proof of that. But I also think that this is a great fix while we talk about how to do that within the constraints, within the constraints of our budget. And so really excited about that. And one other council goal went live this, this month, too. We just put the porta potties in the parks, which, you know, as Councilman Corbett had talked about, one of those kind of ad hoc, off-the-cuff comments, that was the same thing. We put in as a test last year, we put family-sized porta potties in some of our most traffic parks, and we adopted as a council goal this year to continue that. And those are at the parks. I've already gotten a couple of messages from some of the neighbors around Monroe that they're happy that the porta potties are there, which, by the way, is a message you don't ever anticipate you're going to get in public service, is thank you for the porta potty being delivered, but I was really happy to get that, get that message, and really excited that, you know, families will be able to spend more time in the parks because they won't have to go home for, you know, taking care of bathroom breaks and changing diapers and things like that. So really, really exciting time for Parks and Recreation in our city, and, you know, I think everybody here, all of our staff, everybody who's worked on this should absolutely, absolutely get a pat on the back, and, you know, I'm appreciative of everybody's efforts on this. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geddings?
Yes, just one thing, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Cory and his staff. I called last week, I'm trying to remember what day, but some folks were over at Edison Park on the infield, and they put on a display close to what we do here at Civic, and this was after 10 o'clock, and I didn't see any actual alcohol there, but they all seemed to be having a good time. And Cory's staff had a car out there within minutes, and he had them disperse. It's just something I think, I hope we can look at maybe down the line here about possible alternatives, or maybe getting our hands on the Reitbauer with the state. I don't know. Just, I'm going to do a little research, and I'll try to get back to you guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
City Manager, Mr. Myers?
No, sir. Thank you.
Acting City Clerk, Ms. Sanchez? Mr. Clark?
Nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to announce, first of all, we know that the Madison Heights Intermediate Women's Club is very active, and we're kind of the inspiration for the Madison Heights Men's Club as well. But I wanted to announce that they are going to use a new name. Way back when they started, there was a Madison Heights Junior Club and a Madison Heights Senior Women's Club, and so we called ourselves the Madison Heights Intermediate Women's Club. There are no Junior Women's Club or Senior Women's Club anymore, so now they have dropped that, and their name is going to be the Madison Heights Women's Club, so just like the men's club. So it's going to be easier to remember. They are part of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which are all over the United States, and I was excited to see, I got an email from Rosalyn Nierman, our librarian director, and she said that she had received a call, they had an international convention in California in June, and she received a call that Michigan had won the award for legislation and public policy, and Rosalyn happened to be the chair of that service project. So I thought that was quite a feather in her cap, because we won it for the whole state. That was our women's club that was a great part of that. So that was put in place to bring legislation to, to the, all the women's clubs all over the United States, and I think that's really something that our project won the legislation award for the whole country. So that was great. Way to go, Rosalyn, and all the ladies that participated. They were named Pat Ross, Jenny Lakowski, Beth Hall, Mary Ann Yemek, Carol Prisby, Alison Dutton, and Diane Pholus, were some of the people that played a great part in that committee. So that's quite a feather in her cap. I also wanted to thank the Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens for their sweet little cheer gift, which I will hold up. And this, whoops, hello there. He fell for me. Any case, I know that coming into the meeting the last time, I had a mishap and was not able to attend the meeting, and so I was given this little cheer up thing, and I thought that is so sweet, and they do that on a regular basis for, not only for people that are sick but need cheer up, but also for funeral people. So I think that's really a nice gesture to do that. Thank you, Friends of the Madison Heights area seniors. Thank you very much for doing that. And I was quite pleased to realize that when I was doing some of the history for our city, I realized, and I don't mean to brag, but I am proud of this, the fact that a couple weeks ago, on June 26, 1993, I was first installed on the City Council, and so that means 24 years I've sat here in great pride for the job that the citizens have given me and with excellent colleagues to work with and excellent administration, but I really applaud all the people that are voting, and who vote period. Make their wishes known, who they wanted to sit up here, because we do work hard. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes, and we appreciate all the input that we get from our citizens. We want to serve you, so you please, just like Mark was saying, it's please, please let us know what you would like to see in our city, because we can't always think of everything, and we appreciate all the input that we give from our citizens. So as far as I know, I know that Councilman Clark and Councilman Corbett are very close, but I guess now, I now have the long time record, we're serving the longest on the City Council, 24 years, so I'm very pleased with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're not bragging. I mean, that's of significant historic note, but also, you know, you know, personal inspiration. You do inspire us all.
Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think it would be appropriate for the city to publish some sort of proclamation thanking Councilwoman Scott for her service. Something, just a small token from City Council, just to thank you.
That's fine. I love that.
We'll buy you coffee or something.
We'll buy you coffee.